Hello everyone.
Hello.
Good night.
Hello.
How are you? How are you doing?
Good night.
Good night.
I'm okay. Thank you.
You want to call this small country.
It is many minutes. So we started the recording already.
It's started.
Lot of background noise coming. If those who are not speaking can keep it on mute, please. Yes, this is good. This is good.
So I just started like recording. And I think today's we are having over twenty participants. And so once, yeah, most of them joined, we can start. But maybe we can start for a while. So it's time. So maybe so just briefly from my side. So this is the second passive cooling working group. So thank you very much for everyone joining this call. And so today, one of our co-chairs, Mr. Rajan Rawal, he will moderate this session. So over to Rajan, maybe if you can, if you are ready to start.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much and welcome to this passive cooling working group, where today we'll be spending about an hour plus to discuss one topic, which work is which is happening in one part of the world, which is Cambodia. And then we will have a sort of round of introduction. My name is Rajan Raval. I'm one of the co-chair of working group on passive cooling. Lorenzo, who is another co-chair and Hup is also the third co-chair. Probably it would be nice to at least hear their voice right now. And then probably next time onwards, one of them also would be moderating. So we might be able to hear them a little bit longer than what they will be saying today. So let me hand it over to Lorenzo and then Hup and then I'll get back again. Thanks.
I think we will very quickly hand over to our guests for their presentation. So I'm Lorenzo Pagliano, Politecnico di Milano. I lead a group researching on buildings, passive cooling, passive techniques, comfort. And I'm very glad to be part of this group. And over to the next speakers.
I request Hup to say a few things.
Thank you very much. Very nice to see everybody. Hup Keizers from TNO, the Netherlands. Looking forward to a very interesting discussion, presentation and follow on discussion. So I would say Rajan, back to you.
Thank you. So as I stated that there are three co-chairs and we have been fantastically supported by two people from UNEP, Ghanai and Manjit. Manjit is also online. As per agenda, we will have a very quick round of introduction, those who are attending. And I do see people on my screen, not really in alphabetical manner. But probably it would be good to start with someone who whose spelling starts with the A. So Ando, can you just introduce yourself? And then next person would be someone with the CS and then ML. And then I'll take it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rajan, and thank you everyone for organizing this. I'm Andi Al, I'm consultant for the United Nations and supporting the passive cooling project in Cambodia. Thank you.
The person having a CS initials. You need to unmute yourself before, yes.
Yeah, it's Dr. Sareen. Dr. Sareen, can you introduce?
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you. We barely hear you, but yes, probably we can see your name. Over to Mark.
Hi, my name is Mark. I'm, I work for a private sector developer in Cambodia. So I'm the private sector partner of the project that will be discussed today. Thank you.
Great. And next is Kimberly Roseberry.
Good evening, everyone. Greetings from Bangkok. Kim Roseberry from the Economic and Social Commission for Asia and the Pacific. Great to see you all.
Maybe Rajan is frozen, so maybe we can continue. So maybe, yeah, Kanagaraj, please.
Yeah, hello, everyone. I'm Kanagaraj Kanesan. I'm an architect and I'm based out of New Delhi. And I'm consultant to UNSCAP for this project on passive cooling strategies for Cambodia. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rajip, is there Rajip here today? No. So maybe, sorry, Ando, did you say that already? Sorry.
Can I just to add one thing? I think Andi Al has already introduced. I can see there are twenty twenty-five or also increasing number of participants. Can we like ask, request participants to include their names in chat? And then we can cover it up and we can maybe start with that presentation.
Yeah, I think that's great. I mean, Manjit, thank you very much for that intervention. And I think it's going to be more productive if people simply write their name and the organization from where they are working right now. And I think we should get back to agenda and members' presentation. Today, we will be joined, we are joined by Kanaga and Raj Kumar, young people from India, working on multiple aspects in inside India, outside India. And they will be talking about passive cooling strategies for sustainable development in Cambodia, the work which they are doing with the UNEP and other team members. Both are having a very good experience, at least in India. I have seen their work and quite impressed with that, what they're doing. So can I hand it over to Kanaga and Raj to talk about what work which are doing? And we will have about twenty minutes, twenty-three minutes of presentation and then ten minutes of Q and A. But I would request people to put their questions in a chat box so that we can moderate. And I also will take help from Manjit. If at all my connection gets lost, probably Manjit, if you can help me to moderate some of the question and answer sessions. So over to Kanaga and your team.
Thanks, Rajan sir. We will start with Kim. And then I and Andi Al will come in to make the presentation. Over to you, Kim.
Thanks, Kanagaraj. Greetings, everyone. Again, Kim Roseberry here from UNSCAP, the Economic and Social Commission for Asia and the Pacific. And so SCAP is working very closely with UNEP on this project Passive Cooling Strategies for Sustainable Development in Cambodia. And there we are partnered with the Ministry of Environment as well as several other stakeholders who are here in the room today. We are also joined by the Institute of Technology of Cambodia as well as Urban Land. So very excited to see them here with us today. I'm going to give a very brief introduction to the context of Cambodia and then hand over to our team who are really have been working over the past, oh, it's almost three, three years now, I think, on this really important project that we're very excited to see starting to really come to fruition. So just to give some very quick context, why are we doing this? Cambodia is facing the impacts of climate change. We have rising temperatures, increasing frequency of heat waves. And already, according to the analysis that we did, at least forty-five percent of electricity in the country is consumed for cooling, eighty percent of which within that is for cooling interior spaces in buildings. This is also in a country where the penetration rate of ACs is actually very low. So as we think about rising populations, rising incomes, as well as the increasing impacts of climate change in the context of a country that lacks building energy codes as well as minimum energy performance standards for its cooling equipment. This is a significant stress that's coming on to the power grid as people try to mitigate those impacts of those temperatures. So that is also, of course, accompanied by rising greenhouse gas emissions. And you know, as Cambodia looks to meet some of the targets and objectives that it set under is in DC as well as its recently released National Energy Efficiency Policy, cooling becomes a very, very important area to address. So stepping back a little bit, in 2022, with the support of UNEP and SCAP, as well as some of the people here in the room who have been working with us for some time, Cambodia launched its National Cooling Action Plan at COP that year. And this project that we're talking about today is support for implementation of the key recommendations. And that is to introduce passive cooling measures into buildings as well as cities in their design. So as you can see, we have some of the partners here. But maybe now I can pass on over to Kanagaraj. I think you're going to cover this section. Over to Kanagaraj.
Thanks, Kim. So what I will do is in the next eight to ten minutes, I will discuss key knowledge products with this project was able to develop over the past two and a half years. And also I will discuss the demonstration project where the project has provided technical support. So the main intent of the knowledge product is to develop content for the decision makers as well as practitioners and the building sector stakeholders. So the project did a kind of a study, which is looking at the technical analysis of various typologies of the buildings in Cambodia. And through this kind of a work, we tried to look at what kind of passive strategies could be made applicable to which kind of building typologies. Then the two key, I would say, the knowledge products, which I'll be talking today was, will be Compendium for Passive Cooling Strategies in Cambodia and the Bridge Guidebook on Passive Cooling Strategies. And the idea is like beyond these two knowledge products, we are also going to come up with a more comprehensive guidelines, which can become a kind of a tool for the practitioner to enable the scale up of adoption of passive cooling strategies. Next, Kim. Next slide. On the pilot side of the things, I will be talking about the Urban Land Bore Changri project. Maybe we can go to the next slide, Kim. So let's start looking at what the Compendium for Passive Cooling Strategies in Cambodia looks like. So this particular Compendium is a catalog of various passive cooling strategies, which are much more contextual to the Cambodian climate. And the idea is that the practitioners can use it. And this has five distinct sections. The first section is more of an introduction to the building physics and where the section talks about thermal comfort, mode of heat transfer, heat gain and loss, and also looking at various climate analysis of the cities in Cambodia. Then we have categorized the passive cooling strategies into three distinct sections. One, looking at site-oriented passive cooling strategies, which mainly look at microclimate enhancement at the neighborhood or the urban context. The second section looks at the design-oriented passive cooling strategies, which are more architectural in nature and trying to see like how building masking and spatial configuration and other strategies work at the building level. And the third level is basically looking at material-oriented PCS, which is mostly a component level intervention. And there we are primarily looking at, we are primarily looking at, I would say, technology and the materiality aspect of the PCS. And finally, the concluding section actually looks at a kind of decision support matrix. And the idea is like through this matrix, the designers would be able to understand which kind of passive cooling solution is more applicable to which type of typologies. Next, Kim. Yeah. So when we look at individual intervention of this PCS, there are sections which talks about various strategies. And for all these strategies, we have structured the Compendium in a manner that it gives a brief description of the strategy, how this particular strategy gets applied over the built environment, and also what are the analysis tools which designers can deploy to understand the potential of these strategies and various case study examples from the local ASEAN region as well as the global context to support the knowledge part of it. So on the site-oriented PCS, we have sections like outdoor vegetation, water bodies, cool payments. And on the architecture side or the design-oriented PCS, we have mentioned strategies like form of the building, orientation, masking and zoning and also the spatial configuration of the buildings. Then the building or I would say the material level interventions, we look at, let's say, the fenestration, window to wall ratios, self and mutual shading, then insulation in wall and roof and also the ventilation. Next. So this particular Compendium is also supplemented by an bridge guidebook, which is more like a ready reckoner. It's a very shortened guide, around forty odd pages. And in this particular guidebook, we have a description of a strategy of each PCS in two pages, let's say. And what it shows is a brief description about the strategy, what are its benefits, how it can be applied, what could be the general specification of it? And also various, it also directs towards various resources, which the designer can go through to understand the PCS better. Next. So building on these two knowledge products, the project is also providing technical support to a demonstration project. And the idea of this demonstration project under this project is to understand the on-ground challenges or implication of implementing passive cooling strategies. Next. So the demonstration project of Bore Changri by Urban Land was selected. And the primary, this whole project got selected through a competitive process, where we got around seven odd entries from the country. And finally, this project was selected based on its stage in which it was in, in terms of the early design stage, where many of the passive cooling strategies could be evaluated. And also the typology of the project and its importance in the country. Residential building, as Kim mentioned, is quite important in terms of its energy consumption and also the replicability potential of this demonstration project. And this project was very unique in nature that this project has three phases. The phase one was already delivered. And one can say that the phase one was more of a conventional design, which is currently practiced in Cambodia. Then in the phase two, which was again launched in June-July this year, here the architect team already has implemented few passive cooling measures like reducing window to wall ratio, providing roof insulation. So we wanted to also understand how these strategies, which have been considered by the architect, really performs. And the idea was like we learn from these two and also try to see what further things can be taken up during the phase three of the project. So on the right-hand side image, you can see that there is a baseline unit, which is from the phase one, which basically is more representative of the conventional design. And there is another unit, which is again at the bottom left side of the image, which is where we are looking at doing, we call it as PCS integrated unit. The idea is both these units, we are now monitoring through a twelve months monitoring campaign. And the idea is to evaluate various passive cooling solutions in these two units. Next, Kim. So to evaluate various PCS potential in the phase three of the project, we conducted a two-day design workshop called Sherit with the Urban Land team. And it was quite a collaborative process, where we had lot of discussions around the design of the new face. And also we did lot of exercises, which looks into cost benefit analysis, performing simulation studies. We also looked at IFCH tool and see how it can be much more valuable in terms of appraising the passive cooling strategies in terms of its energy performance as well as cost implications. And the idea was like through this rigorous exercise of evaluating various PCS strategies, we listed these six strategies, which are getting considered by the management for the next phase to evaluate further and get it implemented in the new phase. So these strategies are cool coating on concrete roof, then cool coating on the metal roof. So there are two types of roof configurations, which are implemented in the phase one and the phase two of the projects. Then we were also looking at using cool coating on the elevations. We discussed also use of solar film on glazing and also outdoor roller blinds as a shading device. And the last strategies which we are evaluating is to deploy low emissive window paint to modulate little bit the median temperature of the units. Next, Kim. So both the units, the baseline unit and the PCS integrated unit has been instrumented by various sensors. So these sensors include surface sensors to understand the heat floods from various surfaces like roof and each orientation of the wall and the windows. Then we have also installed a weather station to understand the ambient condition. Both the units also has air conditioning units. And these air conditioning units are again monitored through an online energy monitoring devices. And the idea is through this monitoring, we will also develop a parallelia calibrated energy simulation model in energy plus. And we curate very specific experiments so that we can really understand how by deploying PCS, we would be able to enhance the comfort parameters or the reducing the cooling demand. Next slide. So this is how the implementation of the pilot is going on. So you can see on the left that we plan to deploy cool roof on the, on one, one of the, on the PCS integrated unit. And also on the south side, we plan to use again cool paint and also provide solar film on the south side windows. And the idea is to measure and then calibrate and then try also various strategies on the simulations software. Next. Yeah, so with these knowledge products and also with the learnings from the demonstration project, we are now planning to also develop a very comprehensive design guideline. And this guideline beyond looking at only the design-related aspect will also look at implementation and maintenance of these passive cooling strategies. The guideline will also look at, will also discuss the cost benefit analysis of these PCS and also provide a decision support tool so that the designers can make informed decision making. This whole work, which we did for the past two years, has developed this conducive environment in the country in order to appraise, let's say, evidence-based PCS integration in the policy and also its dissemination through community of practice, which my colleague Andi Al will take you through. Over to you, Andi Al.
Thank you, Kanagaraj. So I will, I will give you only a very brief overview of what we are doing and what we, we try to complete as policy and practice integration, because there are the logical activities and component of the project. But I will only go for a quick overview. So we have time for question and answer on the Compendium and the demonstration project. So as Mr. Kanagaraj said, with this knowledge products and the field data from the demonstration, we expect to better inform Cambodia National Courts for building and energy with the idea to provide practical recommendation about how to be able to set up a minimum regulatory standard about quality and efficiency and also about some more ambitious targets that could be driven by voluntary initiative and will inform the evolution of this minimum quality standard. So translating passive cooling strategies into regulation needs some measurable index and performance index. So along the more architectural surely recommendation, the elaboration of building energy performance will help also to structure this policy integration and framework. Next slide, please. Next, thank you. So following the previous one. Thank you. So following this process of informing the policy and hopefully integrating some national chapter and section, we hope to support Cambodia to meet also some of its commitments and international targets. More locally, they have been developing National Policy on Energy Efficiency and also launch this National Cooling Action Plan, which should support to make the building sector and particularly the residential sector more efficient in term of energy use, but also supporting the update of the national determined contribution and Paris Agreement with some objective of greenhouse gas emission reduction. So again, as also a support to the more, I would say, practical side of implementing and enforcing the building codes and other broader aspects. But with hopefully following the process and action roadmap that I've been establishing so far, we which are to to start step by step to implement some passive cooling strategies. So first with public building, a certain number or size of commercial building and then uh apply it to the residential sector. Next slide, please. And obviously, uh we have a great uh set of technical tools. We have a site demonstration uh model. And we are pushing for policy integration, but this would not be complete if private people and the practitioner on the field uh are not effectively starting to engage with passive cooling strategies within their daily work. Or we have been in partnership with uh Institute of Technology of Cambodia University, launching a community of practice and already handling uh two technical trainings with a design builder software which integrate energy plus as well and so supporting uh already dozen of people to become able to use energy simulation with building modeling. And these people are mostly architects, engineers, energy auditor, but also policy consultants or M E P specialists. Some of them uh are coming from private companies, a few from universities. We were lucky, we had the 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 presence of people working in public institution, which is good also to better inform the integration of the policy and also some development organization working on access to energy and energy efficiency. So this activity has support to explain to the broader ecosystem of stakeholders or objectives uh be clearer with the concept. I have seen personally like passive cooling strategy for all the ones who are there this evening look like an an obvious concept, but on the ground, it's not always the case. And so we were able successfully to share also all these knowledge products and to provide people with hands-on practice with very great support of I D S team managing the training. I will just stop there and open for any Q and A. Thank you.
Actually, yeah, Kim used that, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Thanks. So uh Manji, um I was just gonna say maybe we could um take some comments or um the opportunity to fill in some of the gaps that may have uh come up in this presentation. Um but I might want to start with saying how important it is this ground truthing that we're doing through this pilot demonstration. And as Andyall kind of alluded to, you know, some of these things might seem obvious, like for instance, cool paint seems like a very quick and easy solution. But in Cambodia, it has not been easy. Um first of all, trying to select a product or even find a product in the market has been extremely difficult. There are supply chain um uh issues there. When we're looking at imported products, the costing and the benefits um are uh an equation that has yet to be fully analyzed. Um and then there's uh no current demand or very little current demand for uh these types of products. So you know, cool paint like in India, for example, is being rolled out at scale, but in Cambodia is very new to this market and I invite um Manjit uh or even Mark from Urban Land who is um been such a great partner to this project uh and working with us and his patience and Urban Land's patience as we uh work through some of the challenges that we faced um throughout the project. Um but also working with us to provide us really uh valuable information about the reality of implementing uh passive cooling in the residential sector. So maybe I'll stop there and let others jump in from our team before opening up more broadly to the floor.
Thanks, thanks, Kim. I I think uh nothing much to add from my side. I would just like to uh acknowledge here Ministry of Environment and Ministry of Construction also. They have been uh really strong supporter for this topic. After N C A P and N D C integration of PCS. So thanks to them. And then definitely, I think, let's have discussion. Uh good Q and A session.
Uh thank uh thanks all speakers and thanks Manjit uh for adding some comments here. Uh we have one comment or question from Rosmir. Uh would you like to ask question directly and unmute yourself?
Sure, see my cameras are working. One of the main, main things that I am uh working with, I so I represent I F C um and I was the business development lead for our Edge program. So I want to make sure that everybody on the call is aware of some of the free resources that we have and to ask you if you incorporated some of the edge analysis because I F C is looking to launch our green buildings program. In Cambodia, obviously passive cooling would be one big element. Um and if you don't know about Edge, I can spend two minutes telling you about it uh because some of your analysis could then um fine tune some of our base case and our calculations. So with the idea, right, that the the users don't have to buy energy modeling. Edge is a free energy model that they can utilize. Um and I know that right now one of the things that we can connect, there's an ongoing discussion for Cambodia's green finance taxonomy. So this becomes not only a policy conversation, but a finance conversation as well. And I F C will be providing some comments on the taxonomy.
Thank you very much for that um comment. In fact, we have worked very closely with the Mekong Office there. Um the I F C office and we've had a number of conversations with the Mekong Office. Um and we've had uh I F C there present during some of our workshops and we have brought on an edge expert um who participated in our design share and presented the edge tool. So um we, we have definitely been looking to edge and um the the resource, first of all, the free resource, as you mentioned, that is available. Um and then also considering how we could tap into finance because that is actually a very key uh question that comes up because if we're talking about integrating passive design measures, there's additional cost consideration when the market's not demanding that. Um how can we uh encourage this? And what are some of the incentives that could be uh introduced in a standard such as the Edge certification standard? Could be one of the levers introduced that unlocks financing um either through I F C or or other means. So we have definitely talked um to I F C and I don't know if Mark feels like talking about this at all or maybe we can take that uh in a separate conversation uh about how we can tap uh into that. Um but thank you for bringing that up. Absolutely, it's.
What I will share and I can probably send via email to everybody on this call. We did two great presentations um at COP. So one was kind of the the finance for for passive cooling that was at the Buildings and Cooling Pavilion. And the second one was at the World Bank Pavilion and it was a deep dive into self-built housing. Um because it is now taking off uh in India through the financial incentives that we're doing and actually the majority of what makes a self-built home green is actually on the passive side. There's a few elements that can go on the active, but about ninety percent is actually on the passive. So it's a really great connection for all of you and you can, I think, I know that the, I both, both sessions were recorded. Um so it's a really good watch to show what people are actually doing and how they're making the link. So I'll share that now as we, as as I'm listening.
That's very interesting. Thank you. That would be great. Uh back to Rajan.
Thanks. Uh uh do we have any question or comment from the group? Uh I have a couple of question, uh very generic, very basic question uh for Kanaga and his team. Uh but I would like to uh give opportunity to others before I ask any question. Do we have any question from the group? Okay, let me. Uh let me, let me. So just trying to understand, thus Cambodia is gearing up towards uh any kind of building code? Because I do see her, see here that there are some policies and there are some uh the N caps and other policies as well, but how far the country is from having a code, if at all, the code is not in place? Uh that's the first question. Let me, let me also extend my question that learning from many, many, any country is having a code uh and facing a challenge of implementation and more challenges for enforcement. If at all Cambodia is thinking about code, is it possible for any of you to reflect upon what nature of the code one is going to see in future?
Thanks Rajan. We can take that uh question. Um so S C A P and U N E P are working to establish um a a partnership with the Ministry of Land Management, Urban Planning and Construction uh to work uh with them on building uh codes. Uh in particular, so they are um in the process of developing those building codes. Uh and in particular, we would have the opportunity to contribute to their architectural guidelines architectural standards rather and green building guidelines. Um at the same time, we're working with the Ministry of Environment and they also have uh building guidelines that we will um contribute to and uh harmonize across uh to ensure there's alignment between the guidelines that are being published uh under the different uh ministries. Um and Andyall, uh maybe I can call upon Andyall because Andyall, he's been uh mostly deeply uh engaged with the ministries in these conversations most recently in just the the past month or so. Um over to Andyall.
Thank you, Kim. Uh it it's a good question. I think um some all Cambodia is not looking to develop their building codes. It has been years, but it has been a lot with uh likely too much lobby and too much politics. So they were not uh it was not possible to sort them out, but not due also to the fact that it's it's uh also a new factor to attract foreign investment. Uh Cambodia is working on on elaborating the building codes. Uh other factor in the country like uh general pressure and political support on the energy efficiency topic, for example, is helping a lot. Also, the current Ministry of Urban Planning and Construction, it was previously the Minister of Environment and is uh supporting a lot uh all what is related to uh sustainability to some level. So it's at least for our project, it creates some uh facilitation. Also, I think uh as as some of you are from your country, you may have experience. Uh in Cambodia, Cambodia, it's already a very hot and humid country. And and know that we are facing regular uh heat wave. The topic of passive cooling also is is getting much more interest from uh broader stakeholder uh dimension. Thank you.
Thank you. That's pretty helpful. Um any comment or question from the group?
I think we have uh Lorenzo is hands up, but just to add point on this building code. Uh yes, they have codes, they are voluntary, but the one of the challenge also uh we found is that they have three different types of code like green building code with some ministry, then there is a building technical regulation code which is bit different and then there is an energy building code, I think they are developing. So that that interministerial coordination might be challenging into and they are working towards, as Andyall was saying, to synergize everything. So just to add this comment. Thank you. Yeah, Lorenzo.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the presentation. Very interesting what's going on both on the technical side and the policy and financing side. And and the financing and the cost brings me uh obviously, there might be elements of passive cooling which imply, I don't know, additional elements to the building and then so additional cost. But some of the things that have been listed as uh passive cooling uh strategies are when designing a new building are uh something which has to do with good design rather than with additional elements. So window to wall ratio, the right size of windows, uh orientation, self-shading and shading from other uh buildings. All those things in in a settlement like the one we have seen, if from the start these elements are introduced, they are just maybe an additional cost of thinking uh before doing. So the the additional cost is just investing some more time in the planning rather than than concrete or or painting or so. Ob- obviously, it's important to bring the process, to start the process as early as possible, which will bring to better result and much lower costs, but probably this is um already apparent, but maybe worth underlying. And on on the elements, maybe again, choices, roller blinds have been cited as being I don't know if they are continuous roller blinds as we have here in Italy. Obviously, they shade, they protect from intrusion, but they uh are an obstacle to ventilation. So the choice of hmm simple and maybe not costly uh external shading which which allow all the ventilation is is a possibility. Uh I'm thinking of very simple solutions, but we don't have time to go into them, but just to mention. And and ceiling fans to obtain high velocity. If there is humidity, um yeah, maybe some strategies are, so I I just want to um mention and maybe later give a um a link to to one of the reports we did in the uh Africa, Europe, built bioclimatic uh architecture collaboration. Uh a a report on comfort and air velocity in comfort where the role of okay, natural ventilation for comfort ventilation on people and air velocity by simple and very inexpensive ceiling fences, one of the elements which I would like to propose as one possible element to be considered in the overall recipe. But we will time to have time to discuss that if if there is interest. I stop here.
Great. Just to reflect on it very quickly, great points. Uh I think exactly these are the discussions which were happening while we are developing the knowledge products also with the community of practice and even uh with Mark's team uh who looks at basically this urban land project. We, we also wanted to see like to extend a little bit more than passive cooling as you mentioned about ceiling fans uh like towards a low comfort cooling systems. Uh but I would say that we deliberately did not include it, then it becomes little bit active but attached to it, right? But from a thermal comfort point of view, uh like we uh we understand that uh it's a very good discussion and it quite dovetails with, let's say, the ventilation strategies and other things. Thanks, Lorenzo. Did he keys us?
Yes, thanks. Uh I really liked the presentation, well, the the whole story, but especially the compendium. Uh I was just wondering how easy, well, actually I have two questions, but how easy is it to access for practitioners or individual architects or construction companies? But also how easy is it for the uh public procurement officers? And and the other one relates more on uh passive cooling. If you do uh public procurement, do you prescribe certain medicines or do you do it performance-based? Because in Europe, we are focusing nowadays more on whole life cycle G V P, global work potential C O two. So these two questions, maybe somebody can reflect on that.
Shall I attempt Kim a little bit? And then maybe like team can come in. So in terms of like accessing uh the stakeholders. So that is where the I T C has played a very So that is where the ITC has played a very critical role in Cambodia. And this institute was able to bring together practitioners as well as students, I would say. The intent is like whatever we are discussing, it gets disseminated quite effectively. And the dimension of procurement also comes in like when Kim mentioned about supply chain part of it, right? So really understanding what is available and how it can be made available in the future. So those are the discussions which were happening in this community of practice. Yeah, so, so your second question was related to?
Actually to public procurement, do you do it performance based or do you try to prescribe certain measures? So is it?
So in this guideline, we have for each of the PCS a section on specifications, which are more performance oriented specifications. And the intent is the designers can use this specification into their procurement or the tender documents. So that's the kind of, I would say, extension we are doing for the guideline. So that it becomes a point quite handy for the stakeholders to consider the performance requirements.
If I may just jump in quickly. When we think about Cambodia, we have to really set ourselves in that context. And that it is very much a developing economy. And the public procurement of equipment, that really, that's not yet happening in the cooling sector. There, again, building energy codes have not been introduced. They're under development. The guidelines are, there are some guidelines out there, but it's very much in its infancy in terms of, of policy incentives and guidelines. So, so it's exciting in that way because we are, you know, contributing to, to the beginning. And hopefully it's helping set a solid foundation for a strong policy framework into the future. But it's a very, very much an emerging issue in this market.
Yeah, thanks for the answers, actually reflecting my feeling. If I look to the Netherlands, it's already very hard to reach individual construction companies or even the supply chain. I can imagine that that's even more difficult than Cambodia at the moment.
So when?
We can do it, we can do it.
And I'll speak on behalf of urban land, but they went, they were pulling their hair out, trying to even find a bucket of cool roof paint in Cambodia. So it, and that bucket of paint, you know, the cost of it was one thing. But say on, on the company's website, but by the time it's transported, imported, pays the duty, et cetera, the cost has doubled or even tripled at that point completely through the, the, the models that they had in their mind about the economic feasibility of integrating that. So it's, again, you know, the companies will say these products are available, but then, and I know that Kanagage and his team have done a lot of work also with our Andyall and other consultants on the ground, just trying to understand the, the current offerings in the market, which are, are limited or very expensive.
Thanks.
Thank Ganai, over to you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks for the, yeah, the comments and feedback. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I can see some comments, some questions in the chat. So maybe we should address them. I can see like Zara, like mentioned that she's wondering like how much like nature based solution, like greenery effect can reduce the temperatures or energy demands for this Cambodia project. So if you have any, so maybe Zara, Zara, you can speak your question then, you know, to be more interactive.
First of all, thank you so much for sharing your great work. You should be very proud of yourself, you are making a huge difference. And sorry for the background noise, I'm in the office and somebody is doing some test. My question was about a nature based solutions. I was wondering whether, I know Cambodia is already very green, but I was wondering whether you look into the effects of, for instance, green roof, green walls with your modeling and simulation, not for the implementation. To see its effects on moderating the ambient temperature and reducing the need for cooling energy during the summer period. So, yeah, and what about, for instance, I, my next question was about using cool pavements around the building. What about that aspect? Just let's say cool coating, would it make any difference in your area or not? Just as a, yeah, as in your modeling and simulation, have you looked into them? Thank you.
Karak, do you want to take that?
Maybe on the modeling part, I can a little bit explain. So under this project, we also had a component to look at urban heat island. And so we did a kind of a mapping of hot pockets in Cambodia as part of the study. We are still in the process of evaluating, let's say through modeling, using NVMAD to see how, what kind of strategies we can deploy from nature based solutions to water bodies to other things. We can look at, let's say for specifically for this demonstration project. We have not done this exercise, but what we have done is we have created also the future weather file scenarios to really understand like the kind of, let's say, the climate change scenarios and its implication on the weather data and other things. That is what we evaluated, but specifically to the capture for the urban heat island part. We have not done assessment for this site. And this site is quite green, if you see the site map of this project. So this is a low rise plotted housing. And so, so in general, there is a lot of greenery around this project. Pavement part again.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think we are close to the end of the session today. Let me hand it over to Ganai to take it forward and talk about wrapping up and some next meeting, what has been planned. Over to Ganai and also if Panjit wants to chime in something here. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Rajan. I just want to add one point on regarding NBS. So I think as Kanag was saying, the existing project is having, I think it's a, it's a high middle class, higher middle income project. So it has a good greenery and those aspects considered. But in other countries in the region, under the work from like SCAP and UNEP, what, what we have seen is NBS is more of like, it's a two way approach needed to be taken. It's co benefits for the adaptation. Because it's very difficult to have those impacts in indoor temperature of the outdoor, these greenery and wetland restoration and other solutions. But most important thing is that low income communities and those areas who cannot afford air conditioners, for them, that it has a very high impact from the livelihood perspective. So we are, we are also like working to assess these from that sustainable development perspective. Like how the nature based solution could impact the cooling outdoor thermal comfort? And then what could be the co benefit? So I think that's, that's the important aspect. And on the materials, just to add, I think globally ABC has been doing a lot of work in the region. And then harmonizing the materials available in different economies to how can we ensure the availability? So these two points I just wanted to add, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Manjit, appreciate it.
So, okay, from my side, maybe before I go to the closing and, and I see the comment from Regis, like question. So if you want to come in, like I see like greenery cooling effect, like is it the, if it's a shading, it can be adopted in a less horizontal shading closer to the equator? And plus evaporation, it could be less effect in higher humidity rate, is it right? Or so if maybe, yeah, Regis want to say something, please do so, then maybe.
Very short, because we always talk about green areas. But I, I think we have to understand that the green area have, I, I have not much, so much effect in certain circumstance. So because we are, I, I don't think that is the shading effect is very important when you are closer to a quarter, because it's more vertical. So you don't have a facade shading effect. And when you are in a high humidity rate country. So what is evaporative effect of greenery is very limited, I think. So, so maybe we are to, to be, to know that a green area have a best potential effect in some contexts and not so much in other contexts.
Very good point France, thank you.
If someone want to respond to that, Kim, Kim?
Sorry, sorry, yes, I just, I'm sharing a study with everyone here, that Andyall, who's with us. Today's speaking led on a Cambodian architecture, so passive design in Cambodian architecture. Just to give you a peek, if you're interested at the traditional use of passive design through more modern times. And again, Andyall led that study.
So Lorenzo?
Yeah, just a small comments and then maybe I send the link. There, there's been some recent studies, the type of vegetation, obviously. The evaporative cooling happens only if the vegetation has specifically species have been chosen to have high evapotranspiration activity and the correct amount of water is available for those plants. So it's also a matter of the type of vegetation being chosen. There is a study, I don't remember if it's on nature or energy buildings recently on the effect on a district by Santamouris, evaluating that effect comparing various species might be of interest.
Rajan?
No, thanks. I think the person who, I think it was Regis Mea who, who pointed out this very, very important aspect, I feel, is that this nature based solutions and most of the strategies which we talk about sometimes are overrated. And we need to understand that every system has a limit. And the moment you talk, start talking about tropical areas, high vegetation, high evaporation rates, anywhere humidity is very high, and when your wet bulb temperature starts going up, probably the nature based solutions, the way we would like to look at nature might not be very, very helpful, especially the plantation of trees left, right, center. Because in, in, in some seasons, it might be helpful, but largely when you are facing a very, very humid situation, your transpiration rate from the, from the trees might not be very, very helpful. And I, along with Lorenzo and Hub, we definitely are looking at this aspect. And we will try to bring in an expert who can talk about appropriateness of nature based solution in appropriate climate and context in, in the future meetings of, of this working group. So stay tuned about it and we will, we will, we'll talk about this particular aspects some, some point in time in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Rajan. So thank you very much, everyone. So thank, thank you very much, the fantastic presentation from Cambodia team. Yeah, especially big thanks to the Kim from UNS Cap and Kanagage and Raj from IDS and Andyall also, and yeah, Manjit, of course. So yeah, it was really a nice knowledge sharing exercise, which enriched our knowledge of this working group. So we are looking forward to how to take this knowledge, you know, like to be expanded more under this working group. So yeah, grateful if we can keep in touch and, and talk more. So finally, yeah, let me quickly mention the next step. So at this moment, yeah, we are between the co chairs. We are discussing the possible 2025 calendar of this working group. And basically, we are trying to map all the potential events in this calendar. So if any of you want to include any of your like critical events upcoming in this working group calendar, please let us know so that we can mention that. Basically, at this moment, we are planning to have this regular meeting by monthly. So we will have six working group meetings in 2025. And, and date and time will be confirmed shortly. And this is just a tentative. And also, we can leverage the opportunity of the Global ABC Assembly in Dresden in April. And also, we are having the World Building Congress in Purdue in USA in May. And also, of course, we have the COP30 in Brazil, where we are thinking that it'd be nice if we can leverage this working group to, to, to do the joint session at COP. So we have a lot of opportunity, but please share with us if you have any, yeah, event upcoming. And also, yeah, and for, for each of the meeting, regular meeting, we are trying to, yeah, invite our fantastic speakers, yeah, like today. And then ask them to share their knowledge and experiences. So how it works is that currently between our co chairs, we are discussing the potential topics for each meetings. So it could be about nature based solutions, it could be about natural ventilation, or it could be about evaporative cooling, of course. So, and based on that topics, we are trying to invite the appropriate members. And, and also thank you very much for already reaching out to us, expressing your interest of speaking. Of course, we are considering where, where we can put, put your organization to speak in the coming work, the coming meetings. So we will let you know once the, the topics decided and where you can probably sit to speak. So, but also, and please, yeah, please give, send us any interest if you want to speak in the future and mentioning your interest of the field of expertise or knowledge or your project. So, so that we can accommodate you accordingly. And we are trying to share the topic by the end of this year. And then based on that, maybe you can respond to us or where you want to speak. And also, we are, we just started to establish the working group website. And at this moment, under the Global ABC and the Cool Collection website, we have the dedicated passive cooling working group website, where we are like recording the, the previous meetings. So this one, like the first one presented by Eva. This was a fantastic presentation. So we store these materials in here. Some of the parts were confidential, so we hide it. But most of the material is available through the recording, also the PowerPoint, which you can download. So yeah, this is the end from my side. So sorry, I, I'm a little bit late from the scheduled time, but yeah. But thank you very much. Maybe, yeah, let me give the final floor to Rajan to conclude this meeting.
No, fantastic. I think we were wondering that what would be the interaction, whether people will be able to exchange their ideas and comments, but it looks that we are the very good start with this first meeting where Kanaga and Kimberly and the Cambodian team has presented what they're doing. We are hoping to build, keep this momentum on. And we look forward to having more interaction in future across the world. Thank you.
Many thanks, many thanks Ganai, Manjit, for the excellent organization invitation to present today. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
With this, I can, yes, with this, I conclude this meeting. Thank you very much, bye.
Bye.
Thank you, thank you, Kim, thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, everyone.